That's six o'clock.
Alright, call meeting to order. I rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Chris.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda approved. Review of the minutes from March 28th, draft meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting minutes approved. Open public comment. We do have listed down here to include comments on the L H M P. So, I don't know if you wanted.
Well, yeah, I mean, the public comment period ends today, so... And I didn't receive any questions or comments towards it.
Okay.
Do we have anyone other than Ben and Joe?
That would be, uh, Phil and Cheryl.
Bill Anderson. Yeah.
Any discussion on that?
Second.
Who made the... Who made the first motion? Is there a motion to approve that? You can do that. Okay, second by Bruce. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Bruce. Any guests, any comments from anybody online? Okay, no guests. Good stuff.
Um, I've got a good thing. I came in last Monday and the website was down, and I didn't know why. And we were receiving so much traffic to the website that it couldn't keep up, so they had to up our bandwidth.
Wow.
So, it means we're, yeah, it means we're kind of running a good website and attracting attention, so go us.
Wow. That's pretty good. That's probably a first. Anybody have anything else? Okay. Highway Department. Scoring session for Proctor Bridge Number One.
I think this and the, and the TAC meeting report can be combined together, and they're both discussion topics. So, Bruce and John Corliss and myself met with Devin Neary with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and we, we helped with a regional local scoring of the Proctor Bridge Number One, which is the Main Street Bridge that goes over the railroad up here. It is one of thirteen asset-driven bridges and one of three town highway bridges for this year's selection prioritization process. So, Devin thinks that it'll, it'll probably get chosen, and then we'll have to go through the whole process of approval and, and design and bidding, so... We're ways out from getting it replaced.
Over five years.
Yeah.
Are we gonna get lucky again, and this is an Amtrak railroad bridge?
I'm not sure, but, um...
You know, it won't move up, you know, you gotta go through all that design.
But I mean, money-wise.
Oh.
You know, North Street, North Street, we get lucky.
Yeah, this is, will all be taken care of by...
By the O B?
Yeah.
And the state.
Yeah, A O T.
I went and snuck underneath of it and took some pictures, and, you know, it's not great looking. You know, it's got chunks of concrete falling, so, you know, one of those fall down on the train and the price beat up.
Even the top is horrible looking.
Kids will be up there watching it.
Yeah. Um, and then, you know, I'll, uh, if you don't mind, I'll just include this with the TAC meeting report. Uh, you know, Bruce is, is your representative. And, uh, the, the big part of that meeting was bridge discussion, but, uh, I'd say a large portion of the meeting was also taken up by discussion on the intersection down here in Pittsburgh, Route Seven.
Yeah, the Planning Commission in Pittsburgh wanted to make sure that there was a discussion about the, the bridge here at the mobile station.
I don't think they necessarily agree with the plan that V Trans is...
Right.
Yeah, they're gonna eliminate the little green spot.
I don't know, it's...
Okay.
It was all laid out, and, and then I think the Planning Commission wanted some input.
So, that's, uh, Traffic Advisory Council updating bridge updates.
About the Grant and Aid Project.
Uh, it is that time of year, and, um, John and I seriously have to go out and find a Grants and Aid Project that qualifies. So, that'll probably start next year, next week, and Stephanie said she'd help out with it. We've got a, we've got a project planned up on Ormsby, we just have to make sure it qualifies, so... And if not, we, there's plenty of other sections of road that need to be rehabbed. Yeah, and that's all I have for that.
If you have anything else to add or questions? Alright, is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we're in the Board of Water Commissioners.
Consumer Confidence Report. That's where we're at. So, uh, next week I'm hoping to have the Consumer Confidence Report. We got, we gotta mail it out, and first, the first step is just to make sure it's complete, and then, and then we'll start mailing them out. The important part is we have to, we have to have all that done before July 1st, 2022. I'm confident we can get it done.
Questions? Alright, is there a motion to go out of the Board of Water Commissioners into the Board of Sewage Commissioners?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Board of Sewage Commissioners. Willow Pump Station Project Bid Opening.
Yeah, so, uh, we had, we opened the bids for Willow Street Pump Station Sewer Project, and, um, the bid tabulations are included in your packet. The lowest qualified bidder was Zaluzny. Zaluzny, excavating at eight hundred and forty-nine thousand fifty, and fifty-five dollars. Again, it's eight hundred and forty-nine thousand and fifty-five dollars. Uh, the engineer's estimate was nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. There were only two bids. The, uh, the other bid was from Belton, and that came in at nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. So, I think what we're looking for here is a motion to appro, to award the project to the lowest qualified bidder, which as of right now is Zaluzny Excavator.
I can't believe the difference, like, the four-foot diameter manhole, it's like two hundred thousand dollars more quoted from one to the other.
I'm wondering if Zaluzny maybe had, had one left over from our project.
Oh, okay.
That was my first...
Because that's huge.
Yeah.
Yeah. And sometimes when it, it depends on how full their schedule is, you know? Because if they've got a big, full schedule, they'll just say, well...
Yeah, because, uh, Belton wanted to do it over two years. From what the, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah, because these are crazy differences in some of these things.
Yeah.
Alright, so is there a motion to...
Motion to accept the Zaluzny bid.
Is there a second?
No better.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess I just have one thing to add to that before we move on, is that, um, uh, A and E did put up a fight against the state on whether we needed, actually needed a wetland permit. There was some confusion in the law, but the state's kind of leaned in on us and said that we do. So, uh, I've gotta mail out some letters, I've got them all ready, and there's gonna be a public comment period, and, um, we're still expecting the, even with all that going on, we're still expecting to start the project this summer.
Just, just a personal comment. Zaluzny has worked in town before, got a good job, little rough with the landowners. Uh, we need to, uh, you or John need to be around quite often, please. Because we already have, you know, a few landowners.
Yeah.
Temperamental. And with, with his price, he can't be spending time with them.
Okay, anything else under sewage? Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Sewage Commissioners and back to our regular select board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, Managers' Report.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, the interim zoning administrator duties, that pretty much speaks for itself, and still, still doing it. Yeah, I did have an idea, though, and I, I wanted to kind of trademark it, but Ed Boe had already had the idea that every single town in, not every single town, but a lot of towns regionally are having trouble finding zoning administrators. It was also in the legislative report that V L C T gave, where the towns can't find zoning administrators and can't find people to fill the Planning Commission, so, yeah. So, um, I, and I spoke to Andrew, who's the zoning administrator at, uh, the, the city of Rutland, and I didn't think it was a bad idea if one day maybe the Rutland Regional Planning Commission was able to fill that role. If they had a centralized zoning administrator, since, you know, they do a lot of our plans anyway, if they had one zoning administrator that acted as a regional resource, that would get kind of tricky with Planning Commission meetings, but, um, it's just an idea, because, uh, quite honestly, I don't see another path forward, because we're not the only ones dealing with it. And, uh, even the ones, you know, like West Rutland, they're, you know, like, three different towns are using Keith Arlen, and then two or three towns are using the old town manager, uh, from Pawtucket. So, I mean, once they, once they throw in the towel, where are we at, as, as a region, so...
Good idea.
Yeah.
If somebody could do it too, instead of, like, spending, you know, like, one hour here, they could, you know, divvy it up and just...
Yeah. Well, and I think it'd be, you know, beneficial for the Regional Planning Commission, because it kind of gives them, like, a street-level bureaucrat to report back to them. So, when they're creating plans, they've kind of got, um, knowledge, like firsthand knowledge of what's going on and what the needs of towns are, so... And, so, Ed said he had already come up with the idea, and that he would, yeah. And that he was passing it along to the next executive director, it was on the list for the executive, next executive director to take on, so... The Vermont Community Development Planning Grant Application, this is, this has taken up most of my time, but I, I, we've got a really strong application that was submitted. Zion, Zion was an absolute pleasure to work with. With, among the needs assessment and the impact and, uh, and the feasibility narrative, I bet it ended up being like fifteen, sixteen pages long, so, uh, but it's done. I had a lot of help with it. Ed Boe reviewed it, he thought it was a strong-looking application, so we should hear something back in June, whether Zion is awarded that or not. And it's, and it's all done, and I'm submitting it tomorrow. It says that it's ninety-nine percent complete, and that extra one percent is submittal, which is kind of weird, but... Yeah. Um, and then, this is really great news, too, the Mortimer Proctor Playground Proposal. Uh, the playground proposal application will be finalized, uh, on or before the fifteenth of April. The proposal is to have it built by Pettenelli and Associates. Wade Misher from Passive came down and inspected the site, along with the plan that Pettenelli gave us. Wade feels that we have a good project scope and, and made recommendations for making the site safer, like filling in around the cellar door where there's exposed concrete slabs and adding a buffer between the parking lot and the playground. And that would just kind of be a few bigger boulders.
Yeah.
I've got a colored port version of that on the computer, if you'd like to see it. And he'd also, uh, he also said he'd come and inspect it once a year for us.
And I think, I just want to add, too, that the city's been really supportive of us in helping us do this. Like, they said they would even do checks on it for us each year, because they're certified, you have to be a certified playground inspector. Um, and then they also gave us a contact for the ground surface, because you have to have engineered, um... What's the word I'm looking for? Wood fire, yeah, yeah, so...
Uh, we've learned a lot about playgrounds the last couple of weeks. Uh, and Pettenelli was actually referred to us from Rutland City, because he's done about four or five playgrounds over there. And the structure that we've used is from, uh, ooh, source of the M, Miracle, Miracle Playground. And one good thing about Miracle is their parts are interchangeable, easily interchangeable, so repairs won't be too big of an issue. So, we're excited about having that submitted.
We should just have teeter totters and come in a day.
There aren't gonna be any teeter totters out there. Swing set.
That's right.
The, uh, the additional items here, where's the money coming from for that?
Uh, so, what Pettenelli gave us was only about forty-two thousand, and the total award, Lisa, I think, corrected me last time, was forty-seven thousand, so it'll, it should all be in...
Good.
...pumped. And if, and, and if it's not, we'll do something to find it, we'll do a bottle drive or, or what have you. I think we're kind of, we're in deep enough where we're gonna keep going on it. And, and we've got a lot of people backing it, so I think... Uh, Town Hall Roof Repairs, I apologize, this has taken a little bit longer than it should, but we're waiting on a quote from Ricky Miles, and he, he's gonna give me that, and then, he said he could be here this weekend to make the repairs. I think it's two or three towels up there that need to be fixed. Our search to fill open positions continues. Good news, though, we do have an interview for the pool manager position this week. We'll have that before the Parks and Rec meeting. And it won't be the whole Parks and Rec Committee, it would just be me and two other people. And, um, we'll do the interview at five-thirty, and then we'll have the Parks and Recreation meeting to kind of go over the, uh, the interview.
Are these life characters interviewing, or the pool?
This is pool manager.
Manager.
Yeah, so, um, uh, so as far as complaints go, I haven't had a whole lot over the last two weeks. One that came up was, there's a, someone has a drum set in their garage, uh, out in the neighborhood of Reynolds Street, and it's really loud. I didn't really understand whether it's going on now, or whether it starts and stops in the spring, but, uh, I think me and the homeowner worked it out to where she was gonna be able to contact the drummer and, and get it figured out. So, that was the only really big complaint I had this week.
Do they drum, like, late at night or something?
No, it's during the day, but she said it's like they got it amplified or something, it's just full throttle.
Are they a good drummer?
No accompanying instruments, just the drummer.
That's how you practice.
It's loud, she said. So, I did a bunch of research on noise ordinance and zoning and all that, and...
Nothing about drummers?
Nothing about drummers. And then, you know, lawnmowers are loud, so these, you know, so anyway, I, I think they're gonna be able to work it out. And if not, I told her, give me a call back, and we'd go from there. I know it sounds silly, but these, you know, I want to make sure you guys know what's happening around town, these are the complaints, you know, I get it. And, uh, which are valid, I mean, I'm glad I don't have a drummer next door. Uh, I, I attended the legislative sessions, these are always, um, really great to attend. If you're interested in keeping up with legislative reports, you can visit vlct.org. And redistricting has come up, right? And I, I haven't really been keeping up with it, so I know, Bruce, you've kind of been...
Yeah, uh, it's, as far as I know, it's taking place, and, uh, our new rep will be Woodshaw from Florence. And, uh, it's, he's a great guy. He's been up in the legislature for a number of years, so he's got good contacts and...
Yeah, I think I've met him.
A good fit for us, and Pittsburgh is happy that it's, uh, you know, just the both of us.
Alright. Uh, the Beaver Pond Gate's open, is that correct, Tom?
Yes.
Cool. The Otter Creek Watershed Notices? So, I posted the notices around town at the places where we post agendas, but I'm not sure if you all ever mailed letters or not. I didn't, I didn't think.
I don't believe so.
No.
On their site, you can sign up for emails if you want to be notified in advance, so that's what I do.
Oh, that'd be good. The, uh, the Regional Emergency Managers, or, uh, what does that stand for? Yeah, you got me. Regional Emergency Management Committee. Uh, this is just one of the committees I've been appointed to, that I've been attending regularly. Stephanie Burke acts as the staff member on that. And not a whole lot to report from, from our last meeting, there were a few other regional and state representatives there that wanted us to sign up for other committees, but my plate's pretty full, so I'm not, I, I didn't, I didn't do it. And then, Website Content Updates, I've continued posting content to the website, and then, as a last note, I've posted the Easter Egg Hunt, that'll be happening. Do you know anything about that, Lisa?
Oh, Sunday.
This Sunday?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Easter Sunday.
The kids, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, you can go to the, uh, Proctor webpage and, and get more information on that, I'm sure it's on, uh, the Facebook page, too. So, I think that concludes my Managers' Report.
Now that we have action items, everybody hooked at the bills, correct? Okay, we signed off on that. Sheriff's Report, any comments or questions?
The, uh, not, not being too picky, but, uh, on page four, they just did a typo, and we've got, uh, what's going on in West Rutland there for six hours.
Page four.
Which not, which one?
Uh, page four at the top of the page there. It's Town of Proctor, but when you read it, it's Clarendon Avenue, uh, Route Four A, Business District.
Oh, West Rutland?
Yeah. Because we, I think we share the officers.
Yeah, we do.
We just, we just mixed it up, you know?
Yeah.
No big deal. West Rutland did good that night.
Well, I haven't called up with them in a while, so it'd be worth a phone call, however.
Well, I don't want to...
Just say hi, anyway. Bring it up in passing.
Uh, Sheriff's been active around town lately, it seems like I've been seeing them. So, that's good, keep everybody honest.
This ran into a, they're using a white, unmarked SUV. I saw that one, uh, in town today.
Thanks for the heads up.
Yeah, and from, uh, the few people that have had interactions with them lately said they were really quick to respond.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
I saw two of them, where were, where did I see two of them together? Two cars?
There's a state trooper out on Route Three there, two of them.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, Planning Commission Appointment, Phil Anderson. Fill that application out.
Yeah, Phil had, uh, unanimous approval from the Planning Commission, um, as a nominee, and now it's to the Select Board to decide appointment.
We were one short, this should bring us up to what we should be.
So, is there a motion to approve the application of Phil Anderson?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, welcome, Phil.
Congratulations, Phil.
With his appointment, do you have enough people on your Planning Commission now?
Yeah.
We have a full, we have a full, yeah.
I think the minimum's three.
And we like five.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we have two facility use agreements in front of you for the Proctor Elementary School. One is for the Proctor Pool, and the other for the Proctor Youth League Field.
And insured certificates, thank you.
You're welcome, I even reached out to them and made sure that the fields were, um, were open that day, so they're gonna work with the Oberg's, I think, who are running the youth league on it.
Great.
Is there a motion to approve the facility use agreement for the Pool Day at the Proctor Pool? Is there a second? Ben will take yours as a second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the facility use agreement for Proctor Elementary School for fun and field days at the Proctor Youth League Fields?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, both facility use agreements have been approved. And then, the Local Emergency Management Plan is in front of you. Is there any discussion?
Bruce directed me on two things before the meeting, and so there's, uh, two mistakes that can be fixed very easily, and they're not on the signature page, so we can still sign. It has Bruce listed here on the first page as the Select Board Vice Chair, but it does have Ben Curtis's email address, so I'll just make that change. And then, there was, uh, and then Bruce's name is spelled incorrectly on email a little bit below that, and I can have that changed. The other was the phone numbers.
I have a question here. Why did they use my personal Gmail as opposed to the proctorvermont.com?
Were you ever assigned to Proctor Vermont?
I was, I have to admit, I have not used it.
Okay, you want to use it, or do, some people prefer, well, I, I don't advise it, but people, some people do prefer to use their personal Gmail, and that's...
I'd rather get in the habit of using the...
Okay, we'll make that change. And then, these are, you know, these are primarily for, uh, as the Emergency Management Director, it's for my use and for Kevin Blondie's use, so it's, it's got a lot of phone numbers and emails on them, so... Yeah. We're, you know, don't post it at the library or anything, but... And for anyone who's never seen a Local Emergency Management Plan, the short form of it is nothing but phone numbers and emails, pretty much. So, nothing, uh...
Well, it's...
Not a whole lot of substance.
Good information.
Oh, I mean, it's, it's absolutely necessary in an emergency. Got to know who to call.
Exactly.
Yeah, and not waste a lot of time.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the Local Emergency Management Plan?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, plan is approved, and I have it here for signature after. Hey.
Three pages.
Yeah. Thank you.
Transfer Station, Spring and Fall Bulky Waste Drop Off.
Okay, so, I've had a few people reach out to me about wanting, um, the transfer station open, uh, twice a year. I think it's come up on a few, I, I'm not on Facebook, but I've heard it come up, that, that it came up in one of the chats. But, uh, and then even physically, people have talked to me about it. So, I called Casella and got some prices from them. They say it's a hundred and fifty dollars for the dumpster, and then it's a hundred and twenty dollars per ton, alright? And the last time we did it, we had about five tons, so that would be seven hundred and fifty dol, it, it's a, last time it cost us about seven hundred and fifty dollars. And I spoke to John Corliss about it, and he said, you know, two guys would work overtime, uh, to run it. And then, I also spoke with Mark Che, and we decided, you know, it might be smart if the Select Board did choose to, to do this, to have the Hazard Waste Day... to have the Hazard Waste Day and the Balky Pickup Day happen at the same time.
You've done that in the past?
Yeah.
I think we've always had the truck come.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we just, when we did the budget, I think we were just trying to chop some stuff out, but I know it's worked well in the past and...
What percentage of the people use it?
I'd say that just the...
Pretty much 20, and it's a pretty good return, so I'd argue.
Yeah.
I'd say just the logistics of it would be worked out. You know, we didn't budget. I don't think we, well, I know I didn't budget for it for '23, but I don't think it was budgeted for '22. So you probably save that much just on not having a zoning administrator, or not, you know, paying extra for a zoning administrator. So it probably wouldn't be too much on having to move a little bit of money around. But I guess, would you want, how would you, would you want to charge? And if you do want to charge, what do you think that would look like?
What were we charging, Ben? I don't remember.
I don't know. It was my truck.
It was dependent on what you had, if it was like in your trunk versus like a truck or a trailer.
Yeah, I think it was, if you had it in your trunk, it was like five bucks and if you had a...
Truckload.
A pickup load or a trailer, it was like, what?
Ten, fifty?
Yeah.
For, I was there once or twice, and for the money we took in, it wasn't worth the hassle, you know?
And we just, like I said, it's either getting the word out so everybody gets them ahead of time and just drives down and has a permit. Said, here, I got this, versus standing there collecting money and people yelling at you because they don't want to pay.
Yeah.
I think for $750, it's...
Put a couple of dumb guys down there, make sure it doesn't turn into a mess, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Proctor isn't open, that's the one thing.
Oh.
Is this for lawn stuff also, tree, you know, branches?
Yeah, I spoke to John about that, and he said he preferred not to have a brush fire because it's usually all damp and the thing burns for days, you know?
Yeah.
Gross and smoldering. So he would be able to find something to do with the brush, whether it be mulch it or just...
Oh, so he's saying they can bring it, just don't burn it?
They can bring it, but they just won't burn it. So if you don't, yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Yes, I think people like to do that.
I think it helps us when we go to have to get the permit for it down there, that it's still being used.
Yeah, because they were, they were after us about closing it.
Yes. And I think this helps so that it isn't something that's there but not, not used. So I think this helps us when we have to renew that permit. And it's probably within the next year or two that it's coming up for renewal.
Yeah, I asked Mark about that today, but he said he just, he had a lot going on, so he wouldn't be able to get me the permit information back until later in the week. But I think we're all right.
Yeah.
So I make a motion. We open the dump this spring day to be determined. A sticker will be required. Doesn't really generate any revenue, but it shows there from Proctor.
Yeah.
Do you think we got stickers around or no?
So you do.
I believe we do.
You're supposed to have one. We can go into Rutland, but you got to have a sticker saying, I'm a member of the district.
Is the hazardous waste already scheduled?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'll determine when we do it.
So we'll just schedule it.
Whenever they have it scheduled.
Yeah, I kind of wanted to talk to Carrie about that first. Do you think she'd be, I don't know if she has any, she's our rep with the...
Are they set dates or can they be changed?
Yeah, it's, it's been published.
Yeah, so we'll just find out that date and schedule this.
We got, we got time.
I almost think it's May 1st.
The hazardous waste, that's quick.
May 1st is a Sunday.
Then it, it might have been on my birthday then, May 2nd, because I remember, I think it was my...
It was a Saturday.
It's usually the first, we always did the first Saturday of May, the first Saturday of October.
Oh, so May 1st. It's my brother's birthday, that's why. But...
Okay.
Okay, so...
The first Saturday in October?
Well, that's what we have always...
Yeah, and they've been doing the hazardous waste down at Carpenter and Costin, but if we got the...
They allowed us to use their parking lot, yeah.
Got the transfer station open, might as well just do it there. You think, or no?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. They've done it both places, and that would involve Carpenter and Costin.
Now, you would include hazardous waste with your two dates, one in May, one in October? It's not a third date by itself. It's in combination.
Do they do hazardous waste both, twice a year?
Yeah.
We usually try, we try.
And it's only like, they only are here for two or three hours.
Yeah, it's a short time.
They aren't here all day.
Oh, okay.
And then I don't think our dump needs to be open for eight hours, you know, ten to two or three.
Oh, that brings up, that brings up a good question. How long do you, how long do you want it open for?
Ten to two is like four hours. You think, or earlier, nine, maybe nine.
Yeah, I think there was some, I remember people saying, well, they'd like it earlier.
Earlier, because they started getting stuff up, yeah.
Maybe nine to one or something and...
Yeah.
Nine to one sounds good. And then I guess, so we'll try to land it on the hazardous waste day, but if we can't, then we're just, is that okay or no?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can report back if something changes. If I can't, if for some reason we can't do it on the hazardous waste day, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, exciting.
We have a motion on the floor.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So just for clarification, they have to buy the sticker before here? Because you just said a sticker is required, but you didn't say A, if there's a cost, or B.
I don't know if our stickers cost anything. I'm not sure. I don't believe it's much if there is a cost.
I think it was five to $10 for the stickers.
Huh? Oh, sure.
You need to show the driver's license.
Well, that was the problem before for the people that were working.
Yeah.
And they said, oh, I don't have my driver's license or I don't have a truck. This is my uncle's truck. I'm using... I don't, I don't care. I'm just asking so when I ride it, it does pass.
I, I think for the number of people that have used it in the past, you know, buying a sticker. And the sticker's good for a year. You can go to Rutland with it. They aren't that much. It mostly covers the cost of the sticker.
Oh, so they need a sticker for Gleason Road, you're saying? Is that what you're saying?
No, he's saying that they can be used for Gleason Road, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's separate.
So they may already have one.
You get a better rate at Gleason Road if you're...
Yeah, so that's like $20 some dollars to buy that sticker. To go to Gleason Road, that's a separate sticker.
Yes, that is.
I show them my, I tell them I'm from Proctor, I'm in the district, there's my sticker on my windshield and...
You're supposed to have a separate sticker.
Their sticker.
Yeah, it's like $20 some dollars.
Yeah, they're $10 or $20.
I, I, yeah, I, I thought it was, well, when you, if you're taking, if you're going up around and dumping, then you're, there's two different rate fees.
Yeah. I'm not interested in Rutland. We're doing Proctor.
So do we have two different stickers in Proctor, though?
No. It's just a maroon sticker, yeah.
I don't know. I haven't had one ages.
Yeah, we don't, we don't.
I could almost just give a slip or something, too.
You just go buy yellow dots.
Or your driver's license. It's got a proper address.
Well, as we get people, I don't have my driver's license on me.
Or you have letters, because you get taken.
Yeah.
Then you go home and get it and come back. Aren't I?
Why don't you just check to see if you have stickers?
I'm just saying, make it easier on our town, too.
So if we have Proctor stickers, we can use them, and if not, then...
Yeah, why don't you check downstairs and see whether they have any stickers? And it may have a date on it, though.
They just have numbers on the old numbers. They just have a, they just add a number on it, so Proctor, the number. It doesn't, it didn't have an expiration date.
I'll make, I can make something work.
Okay.
And we're just not going to charge for it.
Okay.
Okay, I'll collaborate. I got a couple buddies in the transfer station business.
All right.
But they have to get the sticker here before they go.
Before they go, or something before they go.
Right. ARPA project funding discussion.
I think we're just kind of getting close to the point where it might be a good idea to decide what we're going to spend the money on. I've seen a few other towns create committees. I don't think we've got people knocking down the door to join committees, so I'm not sure if we want to do that or not. But, you know, I've got a, I've kind of got a short list of projects here that are listed on various plans and have been suggested by residents. And that was a few months ago. So we've got the dam, the dams around town, like Olympus and Beaver Pond.
Upper Reservoir.
And Upper Reservoir. Those are listed on our local hazard mitigation plan. Of course, there's the water, wastewater treatment plant liner. I think that one ranks pretty high. Could keep us from taking out a big bond, or any bond, you know, if we could find a match or if we had a little bit of savings. Backup generators. We could, we could have one at the water treatment plant or the garage. Equipment replacement, John would like that one. Water system rehabilitation. John and I have spoken about different water projects that could be done around town, especially with these hydrants that have small four-inch lines. Speed limit signs came up. I know that we talked about wanting a couple of those. And then Dale Christie had a lot of, not a lot of ideas, but he had five or six ideas that are on an email that I shared with you in a previous packet. So, you know, this is kind of just a short list of projects. The only difficult part of it is if this gets bigger, it might be hard for me to discover different matches in different places. I think right now it's manageable, but...
You mean if we came up short with the money we received?
No, so if we got, if, well, if we, like, even if we get all the money, even if we get the whole, let's say it's $500,000. I mean, and we choose to spend it all in the liner, that probably won't cover the whole liner.
Right, so where do we come up with the excess?
Yeah, and that won't be a problem if we just choose the liner. But if we want to do the liner and we want to do some paving and we want to do some water system rehabilitation and some dam repairs, it might be tricky to find, might be tricky to manage all the different projects.
They, maybe it's changed. I know this is the requirements or requests. They didn't want something that was going to, you were going to hold money to do something like the liner. They were questioning. But maybe it's changed, because they didn't, they wanted something actually done and not something that might be three or four years, five years down the road. They weren't going to let you hold it, but maybe those...
But the practices don't even have to be complete until 2026 or something like that or something. Yeah, so if we get that funding and the lagoons would be done by then.
Yeah.
Because I think, I thought we... What?
I just think it's really important to remember, we're living on borrowed time for those lagoons. And sooner or later, it's going to be forced into this, so why not do it now with this money?
Well, and that's what I was going to say, because I thought we once at a meeting decided this is where we wanted the funds to go, just because it was such a high ticket price. And if we've got funds coming in, why not use it for that? Because it is something we definitely need.
And even if we could do one.
Right.
And then bond the other one if we needed to.
Yeah. So I don't know, because they were measuring the amount of sludge in the bottom, and I don't know whether that continued after we took over the water, wastewater thing. I know there was a, an active thing of Simons was calculating the depth of the sludge on that, so... Maybe we could look up and see whether that's been updated or...
Yeah, I apologize if I missed a motion or something in the past, but if we haven't, it may be worth making a motion to prioritize the...
Don't you have to hold a public forum? Isn't that part of the ARPA money requirement? Because I know like with other money like that that's coming through, particularly in the last allotment, that is a requirement, that public meetings are required.
Yeah, and I think early on, though, we did, when we were, because we were just doing Zoom and we announced it and we had a meeting, and anybody who wanted to could participate when we talked about ARPA funds.
Yeah, and that's where I got the feedback. And that's kind of why...
I think we did, but nobody did.
No, but you didn't. You have to determine that, just like for the public like that. You have to say like at 6 o'clock, we're having a public hearing for ARPA funds.
And we didn't do that.
We did not do that. We talked about the wastewater treatment facility, talked about using that and not wanting it. There was a consensus of the board to use that for that.
Right.
There was no public hearing held, so, I mean, it doesn't mean you have to do it.
He said, "Good try," like I...
I think, and I think I was trying to be, I think I was...
But you could do it 15 minutes into this meeting, just like you did with the other thing. You just say that that's what it's for, and this is when you're going to do it, and people have an opportunity to come and speak. And, I mean, the bottom line, it ends with you guys deciding what you want to do, so...
Rutland Regional could probably give you some direction.
Well, and I thought, and that's why I was being careful on saying to prioritize that and not to choose it. And, yeah, I thought we did kind of, I thought I even posted it on the website.
I feel like there's some people online, because they were asking about it, but they didn't really ask too much.
We didn't have any cost on the liner project.
Let's call Eric, let's see if Eric will come join us at a Select Board meeting here soon and tell us what we need to do.
Well, I think like Lisa, I think all we need is our next Select Board meeting is put it on the agenda as a public meeting to discuss ARPA funds.
Okay.
Because I think we need to do it sooner rather than later.
Yeah, a lot of places, we've already done it.
Yeah, we did ours like back in, I don't know, in the fall.
I think Rutland Regional did provide a handout that said, when Stan was here, what it was we had to do to hold an hearing, as I recall. I could go back. I'm sure I have it lined up somewhere.
Stan was involved in the lagoon when we started talking about it.
But that was the thing, you know, with no cost. And I know you have got a budget sheet to apply, because it's no different than any of the other places that are currently running right now.
Well, we'll make a goal to have it knocked out at the end of April. I think that'll be good.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any discussion or questions or comments?
The only thing I'll add is I think we skipped over the facility use agreement policy that I introduced at the last meeting. But that's okay, because we do have, we have an executive session this evening, so we can always table it.
I combined it with the use agreement.
It's okay, it's okay. But...
All right. So is there a motion to go into executive session to enter, to discuss confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body in regards to the GMP versus Proctor under the provisions of Title I, Section 313A1?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, entering into executive session.